Old man. Direct fat to hell.
Okay, we're live, girl. Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and call them in to order. It's Tuesday, August 27th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes or reports received and filed?
Done.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Very slow. We got our admin meeting today. About it.
Yep, everything there. Awesome.
I got this afternoon, I'm with Governor Parson. We're doing a presentation at the Ike Skelton Center. Thursday morning, I got a cap region meeting. The United Way kickoff's at 11:30, but I'm not gonna miss that. I get to start ushering in September, so you guys can come to IC and put money in. That's all I've got. Presentation from staff consultants invited guests, economic development update, the victory group.
What's up, Matt?
Morning.
I don't know who needs coffee.
We do.
Thank you.
All right, well, one, thank you for having me. Been busy, having a lot of fun working with you guys. So, really, I'll kind of go over the projects that we have currently that we've been working with businesses and give you kind of a high level. So, there's Project A, which is an existing business that is looking to expand out into the Algoa area. Looking at late third quarter to fourth quarter as they get established. Be about a $10 million capital investment, five to eight full-time employees. But I really think that having the company out there will start really spurring activity, which will be a lot more fun as we continue to grow. Project B, we're working with an existing business who's looking at creating or building a new center within this market. This will be, this project, as we're going through the steps, will enhance our services not only within our area but into our surrounding markets. It's in the service area, potential jobs. There's, as I stated, they're still going through their analysis on cost and building and things of that nature, so that'll be determined as we go forward. Be about a 10 to 15 million dollar capital investment. Project C, working with a group of investors who are looking at developing 30-plus acre advanced research and cultivation. It'll be a multi-use area, potential full-time employees would be about 25, initially with an $8 million capital investment. Project D is we are working with stakeholders and trade associations that possibly putting a service station in or into the county. This is at its infant stages as we're just starting to talk to the stakeholders about possible, what this could look like, location and things of that nature. And then we have, you know, the ongoing support and outreach that we're doing is, you know, any help, assistance we can do for the Hartland Port Authority, supporting existing businesses as far as meeting with them, talking through their needs, and then ongoing networking with local and state stakeholders. So, in the last, I'd say, six to seven months, we've had a lot of fun working with all of you guys and continue to grow our community and... That'll open up to any questions.
I think it's been really good. I mean, I've been pretty active with Matt and I think, you know, he's working a lot of other things besides these four and obviously just his network is pretty broad, you know, it's doesn't just, it's not just Jefferson City, it's statewide, it's national-wide. And so, obviously, just looking at opportunities to grow Jefferson City. And so, I mean, obviously, I think we've had more interaction in the past six months than we probably had in quite some time, so, anyway, it's been good.
I was just gonna add that you can, maybe you started working a little bit with the smaller communities as well outside of just our little core area in Jefferson City. I don't remember if I brought that up or not before. We meet with you on a regular basis, but that's just one thing we'd kind of asked of our economic development tool before was to reach out to them, see what they need help with or if there's anything that we can do to build a strong collaboration with our small communities outside because economically we're gonna depend on each other, you know, Jefferson City and these small communities.
Sure. Absolutely.
I really don't have any questions or anything. I think it's been a good relationship so far, kept in contact and good communication, so appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, commission comments, bids and contracts. Unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
Bids and contracts.
You don't have the newest one here.
Oh. I got, I got three new ones.
He kept his, he had his.
There we go. Okay, bids and contracts, award of 2019-020 DWI Highway Safety Grant.
Okay, we were awarded the DWI grant for overtime and fringe benefits. We received $5,000.
Is this just an acceptance of what we're doing? We're just accepting?
Four, one, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Were you reviewed, I guess? I move that we sign the award for the DWI grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Award of 2019-020 HMV Highway Safety Grant.
Okay, we were also awarded the HMV grant. It was for a total of $4,393. That's for overtime and fringe benefits and also for two people attending the LETSAC conference.
Okay. I move that we sign the award letter for the HMV grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, in the unfinished business, new business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Health Department to present abatement hearing number 201-907-003, Charles G. and Miriam J. Pace, 1823 Osage Elm Street, Jefferson City, Missouri.
I'm here to ask one more time. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry.
Do we do our second final readings while we're waiting or?
Just wait.
You wanna knock some of the other stuff out while it's still trying to read or?
Well, do you want to do the second final reading of Budget Adjustment 13?
Sure.
Just wait until we get this up and then we go in there?
Yep.
Just keep moving.
This is for...
Sorry.
You're fine.
This is for $1,750. This is for the Health Department. This is the WIC sponsorship, and I do need action today.
I move that we sign Court Order Number 13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of surplus titles.
Signing of surplus titles. I have... Betsy, Betsy's here. One, two, three, four vehicles that the Sheriff's Department has wanted put to auction. There's a list up in there, can you see the?
2015 Ford Explorer, 2013 Ford Explorer, 2013 Dodge Charger, two of those actually.
Yeah, is this the one we're working with Gaskinade County on or is that a different one?
Yeah, that's one.
That's in there too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's...
That's good.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I move that we sign the surplus titles for the vehicles listed here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, signing of support letter for the U.S. Census Bureau. He had, they made a presentation to us and they asked we do a letter of support. So, I had him send me a copy and we just...
Pretty generic?
Yep, pretty generic.
Good.
Just gotta fill in that Larry...
Larry Vincent is the chairman.
Vincent is gonna be the chair, yeah.
I move that we sign the support letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of Hoover Agreement for Upgrade Software. Oh, there's Brian.
Oh, Brian, explain this.
There you are, sir. I'm sorry.
Um...
Just a lot for the sheriff.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I don't know that it...
One of those is a different session.
It's a different session.
This is a county domain upgrade and migration.
Yeah, that's for the...
That's for closed sessions. Someone else got the sticker that says closed session on there. Brian.
My bad.
There's a big note on her.
Okay.
So, what we're looking at is, we're needing, on the sheriff's office, we're just needing to change the way the IP addressing is assigned on their server. And this is literally for the labor it takes to do that, so I would ask that you sign this.
How much is it?
It's, uh...
$1,000, $1,000, $11,000.
Coming out of the sheriff's budget, I assume?
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys good?
That's good, yes.
I move that we sign the agreement for services for the sheriff's department IP addresses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, are you up and ready to go?
I'm up and running.
Okay.
Yes. I have one more.
Oh, you have one? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, keep going, keep going.
So, I have one more for the sheriff's office, and this is for upgrading their current Interpol server from an older version to a newer version, and it is...
Did you get it put in there facing the right way too?
I did. We did. You should go over and look at it sometime, it looks totally different.
Did you see his wife on TV this morning? He got that made for breakfast.
Toast.
You got me rattled now. I can't even find the dollar amount of this.
Big breakfast in bed, he threw a turn in the shower, I know you're in a hurry.
I might have to pay, I might have to pass up my money. Oh, right here, $1,500. Okay, sorry about that. All right, so it's $1,500 to the...
And this was for what again?
It's for upgrading the Interpol server.
Okay, I move that we sign the agreement with Hoover for the upgrade to Interpol server.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Sap, he was, sorry.
I apologize. It worked at the office. Subbatement order request for the Charles and Miriam Pace property, Osage City, located at 1823 Osage Elm. Violations present, whenever I got into solid waste storage, they were in the process of tearing down a home. Lot of items holding water, mosquito breeding, and a few unlicensed vehicles. Property consists of three mobile homes on the property. The home towards the front, they have demolished and cleaned up, I'd say about 98% of it. So, they issued violation notice, unable to contact the owners. At the time, found an address in North Carolina. Approximately a week later, the daughter contacted me and said that they were in the process, they'd already torn down the home, and they were in the process of cleaning up the property. They have organized the remaining solid waste, but it's, they've got tarps over it, there's a lot of solid waste that still remains. The unlicensed vehicles, they have organized somewhat. So, there still are some solid waste items, stagnant water, unlicensed vehicles. This is the site of where the home was. Still refrigerators, other items that need to be removed. Property appears to be disshuffled. Is disshuffled.
At least.
Lot of vehicles, there's a few that are on...
That's the neighbor's truck, this one.
Yeah, the property line runs almost down the driveway. But the third mobile home wasn't depicted on the picture, it's the one all the way to the rear of the property. So, I do recommend abatement of the remaining violations, the vehicles. I did talk to them the proper ways to store the vehicles, not out in the middle of the yard and not up against the roadway. They've agreed to move the vehicles off the, some of them off the property and store the other ones. So, you have one or two boats that aren't properly licensed either right now, but they've got them out where they're not holding water. And all these pictures I took yesterday afternoon, and the individual was working on cleaning up the property while it was there in the rain. And that's my presentation.
Okay.
Now, you need to ask for one more time.
Okay, what, state your name, please.
Jennifer Stout.
Take, yeah, if you don't mind speaking to...
It doesn't amplify this report.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jennifer Stout. I'm Miriam Pace's daughter.
So, the gentleman that was working on this?
He's my boyfriend.
Okay, and is he still working on it?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we've been working on it steadily all summer. Well, we kind of got sick last week, but... Looked like a bunch of it had been cleaned up prior to it being in this condition, because I got the text about it and drove down there. Looked like he was trying to clean and get rid of some of the stuff, but it just kind of got worse at some point, so this is all complaint driven and... It just kind of looks worse, so we gotten rid of so much. Yeah, there's a lot there. How much time are you wanting, I guess? At least, at least another month, because, I mean, there is a lot there. Your mom kind of left it and, you know, my dad died and Granny just didn't, you know, and people just piled on her and so... Is a month gonna be enough? I mean, I don't want to come back up here in 30 days and do another extension. Okay, well, if we could do too much, that'd be great. That's something to be up to. You all too, I'm fine with doing that, as long as there's progress being made in 30 days when Mike revisits, we can, we can do...
Extended.
60 days. Because it took a while to get that way, it's gonna take a while to clean it up. There's a lot of stuff there, it'll be hauled off. Right.
But you've got to show that you're doing something, because that, we've gone through this so often.
I know, that's, that's what he said.
We end up abating it, so, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with Jeff's...
So, what, what's the deal with all the cars? I mean, do they run or do they work anything?
Yeah, they do, they do run. The van is just parked there because I got a new car. The Jeep is licensed, my car's licensed. The truck I had by the road, the black truck, I'm trying to sell. And then there's my daughter's cars there and my brother's cars there, and I don't really know. Well, Granny, just like I said, she just let everybody, you know, do whatever, bring whatever they wanted there, so...
So, is somebody living there?
Um, yeah, I am now. We, yeah, but I, nobody was there for a minute. We moved in at the beginning of the summer. We started doing something with it, so...
I think if you can get rid of half a dozen cars, that'd help a lot.
Right.
I mean, and that ought to be able to happen pretty quick, I mean, so, anyway, I mean, that'd be a lot of progress there, so, tell everybody to come get their cars and get them out of there. But, I mean, I, I don't mind giving you more time, but, I mean, we, you know, we gave your boyfriend more time and, you know, he did good for a little bit and then it kind of relapsed and, I mean, I don't, I don't want to revisit it either.
This is a different one though, right?
No.
This one is just since July.
Yeah, this is a, this is a different one than the one that you're thinking that they were gonna get the haul off in there or the roll off.
Oh.
And, yeah, this is their first, first one.
Okay, all right.
I get confused too, Chris.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good with the 30-day extension, but we need to see significant progress.
Okay.
30 days, and so...
Please.
Yes.
Yeah. We, we give people a lot of time.
I just wish you all could have seen it when we started. That's, I just wish if you all could have seen when we started, I mean, that's a big, well, that White House being gone, that is like a big plus. That's why I, I don't know whoever reported us or whatever, waited till we had the White House tore down, probably because of the asbestos sighting, that's what I'd say. I think the house went down and things stopped. Um, well, it did slow because he got a new job, but, I mean, I do what I can, you know, and there's some snakes and, you know, I get, I wear my boots. But, yeah, I, we're making progress.
Okay.
I mean, you'll see whenever I come back in, and that'd be in a month, I guess, yeah?
Um, well, I don't know, you'll need to come back, I mean, Mike can just report to us.
I think 30 days, as long as there's significant progress, keep communication open with me, you can call me.
Right, I've been trying to get ahold of you.
And I've talked to him yesterday, and I think if we keep lines of communication open, if I can't get ahold of you all or...
Right.
No progress, then, yes, we'll be back up here in 30 days and just let you know.
Okay. All right.
Otherwise, I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe we grant a 30-day extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're down there, where's the one on Osage Grand? Is it still up for...
It's still up for bid, and I'm working with Jessica, she's got to advertise it.
Because it's big?
That's the trailers.
Yeah, I thought we had three or four people lined up to do them things.
We do, but it's because of the cost.
Okay, I had one minute because it's so big of a project that...
Okay. Health Department to present abatement hearing number 201-907-004, Shirley A. Gobin, 1208 Westview Drive, Jefferson City, Missouri.
That one, uh, that wasn't the right address, I typed the wrong address on this one. They do have some issues on this, on that property, some tires. And I do need to get the other case back up and running, which is about a quarter mile from there. I must have on the address on it, the notes went out to the wrong address.
Okay.
When I was transferring files over, but I did have a complaint on this property also at the time and working with the property owner.
Okay.
But the rest of the violations listed on that are not there.
Okay, so, well, you'll bring back the, the...
Yes.
Okay, so, we're gonna go to the Health Department to present abatement hearing 201-907-005, Aranay and Twila Dell, Halsor 11002, O'Ferry Road?
Yes.
O'Ferry Road.
This property is located at Osage River Bridge, just off Route B, it's public access. I have not heard from this property owner. We do have, and I've got phone numbers, just haven't had, had any contact at all with him since our last time that we dealt with this property about two years ago. The grass and weeds are worse, I have left notes, hang tags on the door, they're gone, there are dogs there, that's why I haven't heard from them, I don't know. Some of the solid waste has been organized, but that is that the yard has become overgrown. There's unlicensed vehicles, they're parked in the driveway, but they're overgrown. So, this is one of the areas where it had been piled up and then the weeds have grown up and then over the last month, that was just a pile of boxes and stuff about a week after and really nothing since then. There's a camper trailer set up out in the right of way on the road. Again, sinks a little bit of everything. That's the top of the dog shelter in the front yard. Weeds overgrown out into the right of way, to the point, if, even if public works for the highway department, I don't know who maintains this road, but if they wanted to clean it off, they couldn't because of all the weeds and everything, so I do recommend abatement, removing the white, unlicensed vehicle. That vehicle, the Commission Atlanta blast case we had, because they had it in the driveway and it was, they turned the weeds up around it, but at this point, he's not maintaining it, he's not keeping it, it is a public health issue, so I do recommend abatement, remove the unlicensed vehicles, and contact the sheriff on the trailer that's parked out in the right of way. And see whether they want to deal with it under the, under those laws.
I'm trying to remember what the deal was with that right of way there. We had some kind of issue there where we couldn't just go down there and do that. And I'll, is that a conservation road or is that ours? I don't know right off the hand.
I do not know. Yeah, I know it's public road, roadway that goes into conservation.
Yeah.
And I can contact conservation.
Public highways.
Whether it's...
Unless it's ours. They can give a public roadway to the public and nobody takes care of it. Because I didn't remember if we just didn't have the right of way there, so we didn't have the...
This property line goes to the fence line, but its storage area is out into that, like the boxes and taxis moved out onto the roadway.
It is, it's an option, if you go down there to the access and you want to enjoy a good time, you got to drive through that crack hole, so...
The surrounding parts, the surrounding properties are parks, basically, they look...
Yeah, they've done a lot of work with the other properties around there too, so... Yeah, they've done a lot of work with the other properties around there, too, so they have to go through that.
And they're living there, right?
I never find anybody there but the dogs.
The dogs are there, so.
Three very, very friendly, smelly dogs. That is the only way I can describe.
I need to put some dog treats into mental health.
Uh, I don't wanna encourage, it's bad enough as it is. You smell like wet dog. After you leave there.
Yeah, I.
And he doesn't.
That's not motor dogs right away, even.
What's really bad is the property, this is maintained, he cuts this section right here. And, but you come down to where the house is at, and it is just completely overgrown. So I don't know whether it's the other neighbors up here are cutting this field, or what, but it's a manicure lawn.
I would bet you that it is the neighbors, then, probably.
What's it gonna cost to abate it?
That one, haul off vehicles, nothing, they'll have to contact the tow company, the pickup truck, we, or, I'd say, $400, $500, something similar out of town.
Okay. I'm good with it.
I'm, too.
So, I move that we abate the property at 11002 Old Ferry Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're down to signing of MPI participating professional group agreement.
Hello, this is another contract with a, uh, insurance group, so we can bill for vaccines. This insurance group has like several small companies that, um, they manage, so we'd be able to bill to one place, and they'll take care of billing the small insurance companies for us.
Okay. I'm good.
And Jill did review it and approved it.
So is it SVP Network Development Strategy?
MPI, that's what it happened, uh, MPI participating.
Right.
So are we paying them to bill it out?
No.
Okay. I was trying to remember if we had visited about this.
I move that we sign the agreement with MPI.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. Anything else? Are we going to close session?
I don't think so.
Really?
Don't give me too much time.
We're going into closed session, Paul. You stole my, I gave you my.
Oh.
Is this it?
Yeah.
It's the right one?
Okay, well, I went, I'm gonna, I went to a United Way meeting yesterday, uh, for, but it is the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, Phase 36, and Cole County FEMA has given us $22,817, and, uh, United Way kinda oversees this. It's gonna be more food than anything, so it'll be food, food pantries, senior nutrition, racks, I think Salvation Army has, uh, received funds from it before, so, anyway, that's still $23,000 that we will have for, uh, and that's all I've got. Anything?
All right, now maybe we go into closed session, present Section 6, 10.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for security issues, sub 19.
Second.
You're all call?
Sam.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Bill?